Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:12 PM. Apologize for being a little bit late, but closed session ran over. So we'll start out by a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance and cede the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll have the Coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
At seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank again Rod Waddell for being here tonight and helping with the broadcast of NRAV equipment. So Rod, thank you for being here. We do not have any requests for public speakers, so I will move on at this time for any board member comments.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
I want to thank the Rockford Schools for coming out for the Martin Luther King Celebration. I had the opportunity to see West Middle School, Arvin High School sing Smile by Kirk Franklin, and the crowd went wild. Then they sang This Little Light Of Mine, and everybody sung along with them. And then they turned around and did a poem by, really the poetry. And it was wonderful, so I'm grateful for that. And they helped out in the MLK lock-in at YMCA. And we had over 100 kids attend, and so it was wonderful.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Yep.
Mr. Segal.
Never know quite what to say in situations like this. Actually, I frequently don't know what to say. But I'm really mindful of the incident in Benton, Kentucky today with the school shooting. I'm not going to get into a political discussion about the pluses and minuses of gun control, but I know that thoughts and prayers are appreciated. They're never enough. But I couldn't really help thinking about this school all day. And I just think that the more people do think about subjects like this, the greater the likelihood that we have a chance of not seeing things like that happen anymore, especially not here.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items: the meeting minutes of January 9th, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, and travel. The bid recommendation for the buses has been pulled by administration. We'll move into recurring contracts, which are the recurring agreement with the Regional Office of Education, Kids for Professional Services, the addendum to the Workplace Contract Recruiting Agreement for vacancies within our district, and a connected school. Also, the resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2017 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds, the monthly investment report through December of 2017, the financial results through December of 2017, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion in the second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
9C.
9C. Mrs. McCullough?
8C.
8C. Any others? Okay. Then have the Coordinator call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion in a second to approve the item 8C, which is a connected school.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough?
So, one of my questions is, as we do recurring contracts, we always want to see that the metrics demonstrate that what we're doing is making a difference. And there's some percentages in here about changes in referrals as being one of the outcomes that we've seen since implementation of this program. It has not been placed in all the schools in the district. We focused on empowerment zone schools. So it says Rockford Public Schools report a significant decline of 42% in Tier 2 referrals. If it's only in certain schools, I'd like to see through the data, and maybe it's here and I'm missing it, and that's that in the schools there where it's being implemented or in the program is put in place, that we're seeing an even greater percentage, that there's a reason we have it in those schools, it's making more impact. If the change is, if the delta's the same all the way across the district, is the program making a difference? Secondly would be how we are implement, how we're cross-fertilizing across to other schools with that program. I see here on the Implementation and Assessment Plan, data and records, he agrees to maintain school records and data in compliance with the laws, but also using attendance, academic growth in school climate as part of their assessment. I don't know that I feel like we have a really good assessment for this last round of using it, other than referrals are down. So maybe if somebody could speak to that, that would be helpful. And then if they could speak to what exactly we'll be looking for in this next round after this year, specifics requests that we're asking for metrics.
Mrs. Hyde Carter?
Good evening. In reference to your first question, Mrs. McCullough, within the background analysis, the school year 2015 yielded a 33% decline, and that was for the ACS elementary schools. So all of those numbers after that are applicable to the ACS schools. So that's the answer to your first question regarding how the ACS model impacted the elementary schools.
And so the second group is the 26%?
That was for 2015-2016 school year, and then last year...
So if it was 33% for those schools, but district-wide it was 42% reduction, does that mean that they weren't as effective? If it wasn't, the referrals weren't...
Yeah, it was actually in terms of the ACS model schools is what we're referring to. And in addition to your other questions you were asking about some summaries, I provided the board with a brief overview of sixth grade cases that have been coming to you for review. Do you have that in front of you?
Is that on this...
The ACS sixth grade transition inventory intervention for the current contract?
That was what we got tonight in closed session?
Yes.
So, to be quite honest, no, I was in closed session and I didn't read through that before coming up here.
Okay, that's all right. But it looks like this. And so at the bottom of that document, I wanted to provide you all with some information regarding the concerns that you all have been stressing regarding the students who are coming to your review that are in sixth grade. And the total sixth grade cases that the board has reviewed for school year 2017, there were a total of 65 of those cases. There were actually six great students. This year alone, as a first semester, there were 42 sixth grade cases that you all have reviewed. The selected middle schools, there are three of them. Those three middle schools that we've selected for the ACS model for transitioning fifth graders, 50 out of the 65 that you all reviewed last year came from those three middle schools. And for the first semester, 36 out of 42 that you all have seen for this school year came from those three middle schools. And so what our hope is to do is to, this will be our last year for the ACS model contract with Dr. Grumley, is to provide those three middle schools with some additional supports during the fifth grade transitions because of that.
Because we have a higher percentage coming this year than last year.
We have, well, we don't know what this year's going to bring.
Because we're not...
But we're just basically seeing it right now. When we look at the data, the sixth grade students transitioning to those three middle schools are relatively high in terms of cases that are coming to board. So although we're minimizing the referrals at the elementary school, we're still seeing a significant increase in fifth grade students that are coming from the ACS schools as they transition into those middle schools. And this is what we're hoping to do, is if we adopt the model with the sixth grade teachers, we can assist those students in acclimating to the sixth grade.
Because it's not with the sixth grade teachers now, is what you're saying.
No, it is not. It's only with elementary schools.
Okay. Yeah, maybe it would be of interest to bring it, so that we can talk about it more in depth to the Education Committee prior to bringing, because this is the third year of the contract. Did you just say that?
Yes, this is the last year of the contract.
So if you're bringing anyone forward...
We're only doing it for one semester, because what we're going to do is we're going to actually do the pilot fourth quarter. So we want to actually have the sixth grade teams trained during the SIP day in February, on February 26.
Okay. And thank you for this, and I'm sorry that I didn't have it. But it's almost like we tag-team and gave you an opportunity to explain to all of us. So thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Mrs. Hyde Carter? Now I'll have the Coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 8C, a connected school.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion in a second to approve item 9C, which is the financial results through December of 2017.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
There's a comment in the financial results year-to-date that I just wanted to use as a springboard to raise the issue and just have us thinking about it. So because of the federal tax act that just got passed, a lot of people did, or some people at least, prepaid their real estate taxes in 2017 that otherwise would have been paid in 2018. So half of that money would be applied to this fiscal year anyway, and doesn't really have an impact on us. But half of that money, half of whatever got prepaid, is really revenue that we should have been expecting for the next fiscal year. And so if that number is big enough, you know, certainly what I would suggest that we do is make sure, we ought to end this fiscal year with a surplus that is at least equal to that prepayment. And then if you think about it, we really, I'm not usually in favor of deficit budgeting, but you would deficit budget for next year with the notion that you would take that prepayment, and that's what you would use to cover that revenue gap. But I know sometimes there's a rush to spend money at the end of the fiscal year, so I'm sort of giving you a shot across the bow that if we've gotten a prepayment this year, we need to make sure we save that money. Do you have any idea how much the, have we heard any numbers yet as far as what that was in Winnebago County or what our share of that would be?
We don't have an estimate on the actual numbers as far as dollars, but we do know that it went from 60 or 80 people to 1,800 that prepaid in Winnebago County. So we are expecting that to be in excess.
Okay, so that could be a significant number, and we should, we need to have a conversation about that. Thanks.
Yeah, crazy. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments or questions on this item? Not then, I'll have the Coordinator call the roll on the approval of the item 9C, financial results through December of 2017.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following: the appointment... the appointment of Monica McWilliams as a 10-month assistant K-5 principal at Riverdale; the appointment of Michelle Griesman as a 10-month assistant principal at Jefferson High School; the appointment of John Rosato as a 10-month assistant principal at Jefferson High School. Is that right? Both of them are Jefferson? Okay, all right. And the resident hearing conclusion regarding student access residency dispute, and the HR organizational report and addendum. And the closed session consent items, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4139 and 4140 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018 school year, 1819 school year, through the first semester of the 2019 and '20 school year. Students 2023, 4141, 4142, 4143, and 4144 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of the 2018-19 school year. The suspension for students 5005 and 5006 are affirmed, and the following students are, have received EIA's. 1011, student 1012, student 1013, 1014, 3414, 3421, 3422, 3423, 3424, 3425, 3426, 3427, 3428, 3429, student 3430, 3431, 3432, 3435, 3436, and student 3437. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Connor. Are there any items that board members like to uphold for separate consideration? Mr. Segal?
10D.
Okay. Any others? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the closed session consent items not polled.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 10D, which is the residency hearing conclusion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions and discussions or comments? None? We can't do that. That's right. So I'll have the coordinator then call the roll.
Mr. Segal?
No.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch? The motion passes with six yeses, one no.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
There it goes. I'm so excited mine's working today. I have a number of updates I want to share with the board. Thank you, Mr. Scavano. Number one, I did want to update the board on the work of our grants team. Dr. Wolf and the team are working on an application for the FY 2019, 21st Century After School Learning Program. The 21st Century Grant, as we often refer to it, request for proposals. We will work with our priority focus in middle schools along with community partners in the application, something that's been a longstanding tradition. It's important to do a public notification here today, and I wanted to make sure the board is aware of our upcoming work on that. Obviously, the formal application will come to the board. I also wanted to talk about Dr. Wolf's work with the evidence-based model. Our CFO will also be attending training as well on this. But the idea of the evidence-based model, remember with our new school funding rule, there's a different way that that works. And what we learned from the session that Dr. Wolf attended is that we still are on track to have some slight increases in school funding, which puts us at, according to state, a 61% adequacy level. One of the things, one of the things that impacts and potentially holds down the overall funding that we receive in our PS and in our region in general towards our adequacy target is a factor called the wage index. And so when you're in DuPage, or Cook County, or areas that are higher wage-indexed communities, that actually works towards the benefit of those Chicagoland communities, and it can work against a lower cost of living, lower wage community like Rockford, which in the long run, in my opinion, potentially perpetuates some of the wage and income gaps that exist and limits some of the work that the state is doing. The other thing that limits what the state is doing is the loss in CPPRT revenue. So our CFO, Miss Thorne, has talked about that as well, that, so while we are receiving about 5 million, on track to receive about 5 million in new dollars, assuming it's actually appropriated, we will lose a chunk of that money, at least 2 million of that, with CPPRT being reduced, corporate personal property replacement tax, for those of you scoring at home with the alphabet soup. Another thing that we're going to be doing, and I want to remind the board and the community, is we have three charter schools in our district that are partners that we work with that provide choice for our students. And we will be visiting one of those partners tomorrow, Galapagos. We are also in the process of arranging visits with Legacy and Jackson. Just in terms of the cycle of where we are, we're about 17 months away from making a final decision on the renewal with, of a second five-year term with both Legacy and Galapagos. Those are huge decisions, and we're not going to wait till the last minute. We're engaging in lots of opportunities to get to know the work of those providers that go far beyond the test scores, or we're looking at things like compliance to the charter arrangement and agreement. Bottom line is a charter agreement is supposed to be a balance between a lot of autonomy in exchange for a lot of accountability. And as a charter authorizer, we have a real huge responsibility to take both of those things seriously. And we're appreciative that we're going to have the opportunity to spend some time at Galapagos. It'll be my actual first visit there as a superintendent, and I hope to make that a more frequent practice as we evaluate this partnership in its entirety and as they make their case to potentially continue. I think this is an important step for us to consider. Also, coming in, we have two board members, part of a group called the DLT. We're going to be looking at a draft with union partners, the board, principals, teachers. We're going to be taking a look at what a balanced scorecard will look like in the district for high schools, elementary, middle schools, and elementary and even early childhood. We really think it's going to be important to look at what success looks like at the school level in a way that engages all of our faculty work, and it's going to be important that we engage in that. So Dr. Muxon and her team, along with a lot of support from the schools team, as well as the chief academic officer and her team, are going to be developing a first draft of that. At some point, that will come before the whole board, because we want you to engage in that work and ultimately feel comfortable with what we set for targets. And Mr. Rollins's budget and finance committee meetings are going to be must-see. We're going to be building the budget a little different way this year. So they're often sparsely attended, but you're going to, we really are doing things a little bit differently. In the past, we've very much built the whole budget and then shared it at the finance committee as a wholly-built budget. We're going to be using what I refer to as kind of the whole-part-whole method. So Ms. Thorne and her team will be presenting our original budget assumptions at this February meeting, but then we're going to see a deep dive into Mr. Schmidt's operations budget to start with. We will eventually work through our schools and our ed services budget next. Eventually, we'll work through all of those different key functions of how we spend the, so we'll break that $400 million budget into chunks. Again, the majority of those dollars go directly into our schools for that support. But what we don't want to do is discuss seven or eight controversial items at the end of the process. We want to break it into manageable chunks, and we encourage people to be a part of the process and to learn how that budget gets made. I think it's hard to study it all at once when it's all together as one big $400 million budget. There's so much to that, but by breaking it up by department and having some interactive opportunities early on, we think we'll build a stronger budget. This is on our journey to zero-based budgeting, which we hope to do more of, where we really kind of start from scratch and challenge our assumptions, and continually working on our journey with schools towards more autonomy and school-based budgeting. We want to allow our schools to have much more autonomy now that the Title I legislation has passed. So I know I had a lot to report today, but hey, we've got a lot of good things that are going on, a lot of important work that's going on in terms of how our schools are funded, how we work to get better results, and work with our schools, our charter partners, and our community to make that happen. So thank you for your time.
Move on now to committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, the Education Committee.
Education Committee met in this room last Tuesday, January 16th, for a long time. And we had three items on our agenda. All were updates. The first one was about the curriculum redesign that the district is doing. I know that this board is very dedicated and has at the top of their agenda achievement, academic achievement, and that's really what this is all about, is how do we drive the academic achievement? And part of that is having more clearly articulated outcomes. And to have those outcomes articulated, you have to figure out how you get from A to B and what the curriculum will be. I think a real interesting piece on this was the fact that we are no longer choosing a resource for a class and then building a curriculum around it. What we're doing is, a district is looking at the standards and developing the curriculum around the standards, and then going out and trying to match up a resource. And it isn't always just one resource. You know, there might be a hard copy of something, electronic, online software, all kinds of other supports. And in fact, right now, there's a resource adoption in progress for a few of the classes I think I reported on in a previous meeting. Remember, on the integrated math and integrated literacy that they're going to be doing? So right now, they've adopted a curriculum, and so the next step is they're looking for a resource. And what's also important about this, it's a five-year plan, this curriculum development, started in 2012, no, 15, 2015, going to 2020. And there's three phases. There's, there's a planning phase, an implementation phase, and then a review and adjustment sort of phase. And so we're in the beginning stages for quite a few planning, you know, now that we're in 2018, but by 2020, we should have a curriculum for all of our courses throughout the district. That five-year calendar in year two, let's see, K through 8, we only have, K through 8 math curriculum is in its second year. And Reading Horizons, K through 2 is in its first year. So we're just really getting going and implementing the pieces. And Mr. Escobedo asked a good question. What happens? How long do you have to wait to make changes if we find that the curriculum is not being, you know, either developed, or, I'm sorry, delivered, or the metrics aren't showing growth? And they will be working on tweaking things as they go along. They don't have to wait for a whole new curriculum designed to have that happen. The other important thing about this is that the curriculum development is being done by teachers. There are 233 teachers who have volunteered their time to participate on these curriculum leadership teams. And when I say volunteered, we do give them a stipend for their time. There is, what is it, four school days, and then there's days during the summer that they have to work on this. And I think it's really wonderful to note that every single school in the district is represented, except Cherry Valley. They're the only school that doesn't have any teachers that stepped up to participate at this point in time. The next area that we learned about was an update on the Reading Horizons implementation. That was a pilot program last year. This year, we've put it in place in K through 2 throughout the district. A lot of the focus was on the training that happened with the teachers to get them in place. We have 89% of our teachers trained to use this program, and 97% of our principals, which I kind of think the committee thought wasn't enough, you know, because we'd love to see 100%. But the reality is, is we have had some changes in teachers coming in and out. And so since a lot of the training was done during the summer, and then there was a second round in October, it's a two-day training program, we didn't have everybody in place, so there wasn't a way, you know, to really make that possible. But it sounds like our partners with Reading Horizons are phenomenal. They're coaches, they're coming in, they're working with each of the teachers twice during the year to observe what they're doing and then have an interaction with them about what they could do better, what they're doing great, and moving forward. They're also doing monthly training sessions, webinars. I don't know if they're webinars, they're just doing a podcast, a broadcast of sorts, but those are training sessions as well. Very approachable, it sounds like they're really supportive. And the next step will be for them to train enough of our staff, so our staff can, it's kind of train the trainers, so that we have staff in-house who can go out and work with Mr. Escobedo talked about accessing the whole Reading Horizons online. It's been made available to families. There's also some, there's support from Rockford Alignment, but there's also some support, there was a collaboration with the Rescue Mission, and they brought 40 people, 40 parents over on a bus to Ellis School and had them write access at mine at Ellis. Can you...
I think that was conflating three things. There's, they do have a partnership with Rockford Rescue Mission so that they can provide Reading Horizons to our families there. They also have provided a district-wide family night here. We had, we hosted about 40 parents. And then the third piece of that is a collaboration at Ellis Elementary, and that's happening this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And so they're having their trainer come in, and they're hosting families at Ellis for a family reading night.
So it's also encouraging to note that the TBI classrooms, it's totally optional with those classrooms, and yet 17 attended the training, teachers, and they're implementing it as well. We had database line for the district shown for scores in spelling and word recognition, just so that there's a starting point, so we can see how well the program is working. The third report we had was on early childhood. We do have an annual report on that, but there was a little bit of a focus in that there is a grant that our district has just applied for. And there's a lot of moving pieces on this. I'm going to give you something really brief, and then at my committee, at my report time at the next board meeting, we'll have answers to some more questions that we weren't able to have for today. But basically, what, if we get this grant, what the early childhood, what we're looking to do is move from 79 classrooms to 86 classrooms. At the same time, we'll be serving less students. We'll go from 2,672 students down to 2,690 students, because we will increase the number of classrooms that are doing full day. With regard to funding, if we get the grant, the funding for early childhood will go up $7.8 million. And our local money, the money from taxes that we're, that we have in our coffers that we're paying for early childhood, should be reduced by $400,000. Lot of conversation about special education and, you know, what the funding piece on that is, so we'll have, that's part of what we want to look at next time when we're together. The important piece, and I know this came to Operations Committee, is that if we indeed go from 79 to 86 classrooms, in the four early childhood centers we have right now, we won't have the capacity of classrooms that we're looking for. So for next year, if we get the grant, we're okay, because Dennis stays open next year while Kishwaki, Kishwaki is being built. But then when Kishwaki is done, or whatever that new school will be called, and the buyer students move into there, and buyer opens up as purely an early childhood, there still will be short probably about 10 classrooms. And so one of the questions brought forward is, can we keep Dennis open? We don't have all the information on what that, I mean, we have operating costs, but we weren't giving on top of the operating costs, what is the cost for the building administration, and the nursing, and the secretary, and the library, and all those pieces. And we also did not, when, when the, when operations was moving forward with the maintenance schedules for things like roofs and pavement, and since Dennis was going to be demolished, they're not included in all those reports. So we're doing a little bit of catch-up on that to see what kind of things need to be done. We know a roof, we know the parking lot, you know, there's a lot of money that has to be put into it. And what the, or what the early childhood is looking for is some alternative suggestions, so, you know, kind of put your thinking caps on, on other ways that we could accommodate these other classrooms within what we have from a building budget standpoint. So we'll talk more about that next time, and we don't have another ed committee meeting until after the next board meeting. So that ends my report.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Rollins, the Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee has not met since the last board meeting. We will be meeting here in this room on Monday.
We will be meeting here in this room on Monday, February 5th at 5:30 p.m.
Mr. Connor, the Operations Committee report.
Operations is not meeting in January. We'll be meeting on Tuesday, February 6th at 6:30 in this room, and we will have a very packed agenda.
Okay. Very good, thank you. We'll move on now to our action items. Our first action item is the resolution affirming board policy revision, the Board Policy 5.20. That is solely presented, the changes related to anti-harassment, anti-discrimination policy. Is there a motion and a second to approve that resolution for the policy changes that were made?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Segal, seconded by Mr. Connor. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the provisions to Board Policy 5.20.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
The next action item is the contract with Melanie Rick for Focus 5. Dr. Wolf presented this. Is there a motion and a second to approve this contract?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the contract with Melanie Rick, Focus 5.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll ask at this time, is there any other business for tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon, seconded by Mr. Connor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1793.33]